Before we start, I just want to say something that happened yesterday, just tell you all in case you don't know. We had a fire at the central fire department. I know that sounds funny that the fire department called on fire, but it actually did. And we don't know the cause yet. It's damaged substantially. We returned to play. Bless his heart. Got there and went in without any fire apparatus and...
His wife has a feeling. He'll take care of the doctors and everything else.
Okay, okay. That's fine, thanks. Anyway, he goes in without any apparatus on and saves the fire trucks, literally. And which we thank him for, but in actuality, human life is much more important. He was fine. He was hospitalized for about four hours to get the soot out of his lungs, but he's doing better now. So y'all keep him in your prayers, as well as the whole staff of the fire department. And today we got... I'm sorry?
There were two of them.
They were not hospitalized. They were just kind of there. They were okay, because I saw them go down to the hospital to see them, and then I went to the fire department. It's a mess. So keep them in your prayers this morning as we... I think the sheriff's going to come and pray for us, and we'll keep them in our prayers. So can you stand?
Lord, we just want to be humbled today and thank you for everything that you've given us. And we thank you for your son that was risen from being... Lord, we would just like to be with these commissioners today as they go over our county government and the things that we need and the things that need to be taken care of. Lord, just give them humble hearts and wise decisions being made. Lord, we just pray for the firefighters that were injured yesterday and just be with them. Their families that are still trying to rebuild, rebuild a building and rebuilding their lives out there. Lord, we just ask to be with all our first responders, we ask to be with the military as well. And just be with each one of the county employees that we have here in Potter County that have chosen to serve as citizens. All these things we ask you to hear me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay. So today is March 28th, 2016, and I was called to Commissioner's court to order a white for that. And I already did it. Number one's recognition advance from the March 14th, 2016 Commissioners' Court meeting. Sorry, is there any changes or discussion on that? Not so recognized. Number two, budget amendments to consider an act upon the approval of the budget amendments for the 2015-2016 fiscal year. So any questions on this?
Carrie, I do have a question named Julie Sardinezwell. Item number two, $100,000 transfer. Is that in preparation for the poll migration?
No, that was for... That was for code file, yeah. Or in store.
And then one item that I learned on item three, just to make the court aware as it relates to precinct two and the 3,500. According to Judge Herman, this is for truancy and expunging those records as a part of the new state law to that dollar amount.
Is he actually hiring someone extra to do that?
Yes.
Okay. I need a motion and a second on that, please.
I make a motion that we approve the budget amendments as presented.
Sir.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Five, zero, thank you. Vouchers. To consider an act upon the approval and attainment of vouchers process by the county attorney's office, approved in March 9th, 2016, through March 23rd, 2016. Check numbers 167777, 3168005. And wire transfer 695, 698. Any amount of $2,210,160.74. Have any questions on that? Any comment or not many more questions?
Just have one question for the sheriff on page six. At the bottom, ABC signs and graphics for the towels. One is $1,800 and the other is $450. How come the difference?
I feel for... So it's like this form.
Motion for the apology section.
Oh, just looked kind of funny there. That one view, $250. Thank you.
I do have a question as well. Seventeen of 28 sheriff. It's check number 167968. The emergency repair at the detention center on Kitchen. It's interested what happened.
What's your name again?
167968. West Coe Inc. is the vendor. Would you let me know as a follow-up?
Yeah, motion please.
Move we approve the vouchers as presented.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Insurance report case or anything significant or insignificant you want to talk about?
I would like to draw your attention to the fact that there are no cases association of counties weekly claims runs on this particular report. And that is because Blue Cross Blue Shield is having an issue with their claims invoicing software. Should be resolved this week, so we'll see those being caught up on the next claim.
Thank you. So recognized. Treasurers' report. Liam. Good morning.
Good morning. Before I get started, I'd like, while everybody's here, remind the department heads and elected officials if they haven't made reservations for the luncheon at the government... Student Government Day, to please do that at $10 cost. And so just a little reminder. Okay, to the Treasurers' report. This morning in Texpool, we have $398,845, and it's earning 33. Texpool Prime, we have $12,36,559.36, earning at 53. Texas Class, we have $15,0591.94, and it's earning 56 basis points. And in our checking account at Emerald National Bank, we have $3,704,311.84, and that's earning 41. So that gives us a grand total of just general cash this morning of $31,155,308.14. Our $7 million that I have in Cedars will mature April the 2nd, and we will earn $27,979.11 from that investment. And I am currently visiting and coming to terms with Emerald National Bank for increase in rate for Cedars. So we'll be making some investments there after you get in today with that. But really some good rates, things that really been changing, and it's been very good for us. Being able to diversify will be a great thing, so that's in our future.
Okay. So recognized on that. Number six, local government corporation to provide an update. Another local government corporation.
So we met this past week, March 23rd, and a couple of updates that I wanted to share with the court. The Excel project, the final steel beams are in place, as you probably saw, en route today. That's going up according to schedule. The parking garage was reported to continue to be on time. February timeline of 2017 for completion. And I'll remind the court that we were a part of that agreement for 150 spots, if I remember correctly. And so the way that payment schedule is, is 50% when the project starts, 25% when it's halfway done, and then 25% at completion. So I imagine at some point in the near future, we'll start to see that on our vouchers. So I wanted to remind the court about the parking garage.
They asked for it, yeah. I talked to Michelle last week. Can you move on to vouchers next?
Also, as it related, the majority of the LGC meeting was for the final presentation of B and D, which is the group that's doing the market and assessment, if you will, of feasibility of the stadium, what it should look like. And the dollar amount that was presented for the MPEB was $48.4 million budget. What their presentation was, which was a very different model, but I certainly appreciated the model talking. They didn't have any schematics of what it could look like. And so their idea was to get the budget down and then take that out for RFQ, the request for qualifications, so that someone could go out and design based on the budget. So that was the dollar amount that was presented. There was a presentation, and I requested that, and I sent that to each of you individually via email. So I just want to make you aware of that. But more to come, but that was the final piece on B and D. They also had some updates from several of the committees. One of them is being called the Community Outreach, basically a committee. And so, you know, there are... Were very few people initially led on that committee. So I reminded the LGC that they indicated that we would have an opportunity to recommend additional members. And so if you have individuals that you feel like need to be on that public committee, the idea behind the committee is that, I'm assuming, they would have all this information as it relates to the ball field and really helping to communicate and educate the community. So again, if you feel like you'd like me to pass the name along, or feel free to pass the name along yourself. But I know that is an agenda item that will be discussed at the next LGC meeting. And I think one of their primary focuses out of the gate will be a new name. They don't like MPEB. It doesn't speak to anything. So I think that's one of the things that they're going to initially tackle is what the name of it is. I reminded them to just really have a safe space for those that still disagree with this philosophy, because I indicated in that meeting, I think there's still some division, and rightfully so, about the feasibility and what it can look like for the city. So, you know, they obviously want to keep it from a positive angle, and I appreciate that. But I did remind them to have a space that those that had contrary opinions had a forum to bet that and get educated through the process and really feel kind of welcome to have their opinion at the table. But as this continues to unfold, I'll make sure and bring it back to the court. One item that I'll remind you of, the $48.4 million MPEB, that won't be tax exempt because the city will own that. So that's all my updates.
Thank you. Neighborhood planning to provide an update on the city-county neighborhood planning process.
So the judge and I sit on this court committee with Councilman Deversen, Kelly Shaw at the City of Amarillo, and Becky and the planning department. And so the court group has met. The first focus is on North Lights. And they have reached out to the community. I think there's approximately 18 members of the community that are on this court committee. And so their schedule wasn't nailed. They're meeting kind of bi-weekly, and then they're going to have another neighborhood kind of kickoff to bring everybody up to speed. As we get those dates, I'll certainly share those with each one of you. But this is a topic that has continued to be discussed on this initiative. The next one will be the Vadio area. And so that was an agenda item, a town hall meeting, so the public knew this was coming and get them ready for participation. The one after San Jacinto and then Eastridge. Those are the four that are being slated. But we are working, just so the court knows, and Dave and Carrie are helping us with this, we are working on a memorandum of understanding so we can get the scope down, so it's very clear where the county dollars are going. We put $75,000 in. The city put $75,000 in. And so I think there's some community concern of what's $150,000 going to do. There's a lot more need. And so I think it's level setting that the ideal is more administrative costs, getting the plan. We know $150,000 is not near enough money to do the work. So the city is taking the lead on helping get those bullet points down. And then Dave will help us get the memorandum of understanding. We're anticipating just a one pager, but so we have something for our records of what that agreement should look like, since it is very new territory for all of us. But as we meet, we like to just put an agenda item on here, so thank you for allowing me some time. I just want to make sure that everyone's in board.
Commissioner, lay draft and edit it and send it to us, or are they going to give us the information we'll write?
They're going to give us the information and then we'll draft it.
That's fine. That's information. Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
And they gave us one draft, and we looked at it, but there were already some questions, and so they were going to go back and edit it. And I expect it even this week.
Okay, right. Thank you. My hope is that the communities will take ownership in this improvement. Part of the community did. We needed things done. We got together and did it ourselves. I think this is the model that needs to be followed, not the government telling them, this is what we can do for you. It's what they can do for themselves. So that's what I'm encouraged to go in that direction.
Yeah, and I appreciate you saying that, Commissioner Church, because that really is the model. That's the theme. That has been from the gate, the only way it'll be successful if the community continues to own it. I think what I see is kind of a new initiative is the city's also using this as a part of education of how to go to the committees, the boards that are out there and ask for budget dollars, whatever the improvements are, so that the community members can understand that process. So I think there's some education piece that's a part of it, but that is absolutely the theme. And I think it was really encouraging to see so many be a part of the steering committee or the kind of court committee in the community. So we'll make sure and bring that up.
Thank you. Number eight, Constables one and four to consider an act upon the approval of the graphics for Constable one, Constable four vehicles. We have Peter in our...
Yes.
Not in color, so I can't tell.
My mine's silver. Constable Jackson's is pretty much the same coloring. A little bit tweaking into coloring, the same thing she had on her old vehicle. And it's already... When I figured the cost of new vehicle equipment, it was already put in there at $700, but it's going to be less than that.
Are they already done?
No.
No.
They were waiting on John to just say, yeah, we can put them on there, and then he's going to do them Monday after.
And how much is it again?
Estimates at $600, but he doesn't know. No, $600 each piece, but he doesn't know for sure. That's just his estimate. Me talking to him on the problem. He'll be able to, once he gets it in there, figures out what he's going to do. That's just basic. I put in $700 in the new vehicle budget when we got it. And I know it's...
It's budgeted?
Yeah, it's budgeted. Three years ago, I think Constable Jackson got it done, same place, it was like $475.
Who's doing them?
Well, we're in science. He does most all of it.
What budget account does this come from here?
This has no... Here, this is the capital account where we actually purchase the vehicle.
Okay.
It will be part of the...
I know that we approve of graphics for Constable four. This was...
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Five, zero. Thank you very much.
Good job. The new vehicles are great.
Mine runs on all cylinders.
All right. That's good.
Thank you.
Number nine, road bridge request to accept existing roads as county roads. A. Appleson Hills, number one, Riker Lane. Consider an act upon our request with the property owner to accept Riker Lane as county amendment.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Want to understand the way they wanted it as far as excepting Appleson Hills. This fall, is that correct? Is that open on this?
Yeah, what we did was, as requested, we sent a letter out to all property owners on Riker Lane and just told them when we were sitting in the conference best estimate, told them kind of what the commissioners were considering doing, and told them about the example of Bishop Ranches, and just asked them to give us feedback. I've heard from a couple of property owners, one who's not interested at all, but they're not a resident of the... You know, they live actually in Austin, just own a property. And then I've heard a couple of them were positive about it. So I kind of suggest that we might want to put it off another time, just to make sure everybody's a chance to to kind of receive that letter. And I just did. Did I say I've heard from about three? I sent out 13 letters. And there's one more party that I think their street address is not on Riker, but they really are on Riker. They haven't contacted yet. I mean, I'd suggest we pass this, this particular road issue, put in the meetings and see if anybody's going to give feedback. And then, depending on interest, I guess you can decide what you do.
With others, other than that live on Riker use this? Have any... Would they have to use it?
It's currently a dead end road. Just those years.
It's not really supposed to be. It's COVID's act original. But the question I have is one that we've got issues on. They accepted in 2011, and it's going to have accepted Lawberry. And we've been after them for over 30 years, and all this special... So we've paid for the road already, but they keep saying no. And we want to know why they didn't take that one. And we've been telling people that by someone that we...
So when you say they, do you mean the developer, or do you mean the county? Okay, just to make sure.
No, not for the developer.
Well, and I think, I mean, we addressed that at court, that there was some confusion of whether that was implied or not. And I don't think there was clear direction that this was a part of the intent of the court, or at least I don't remember giving that direction. I'm looking for Dave for...
Yeah, I think it's unclear.
Unclear. So we still have, we'll have to decide regardless.
But, I mean, from a legal standpoint, it's whatever the court wants to do at this point regarding actions taken. I mean, that's just my... I mean, that's, you know, that's the legal standpoint.
Well, the other question is in 2000, that they moved to accept the roads in that most of 2001. But they still want the roads from 2011, but the robbery. That was another question I wanted to be answered. And I believe you said before, Commissioner, that that's not exactly what that means. So what does it mean?
I think in 2000, my memory is that we didn't, we just accepted new roads.
Well, it says accept.
I understand that, but that's, you know, again, that's some uncertainty, but... And I'm going on my memory, but... And the fact that the road bridge hasn't done anything different than that kind of suggests to me that that was the actions taken. Now, if you go back to the 2011 action, I have no idea why the court accepted that road. It certainly is a change from precedent to accept one like that, when they wouldn't accept others. So I don't remember if there's a... I just don't know and don't remember if there was some kind of special perception about that. But the reason they accepted that road and not others in the same circumstances. But legally speaking, the court has the right to do that.
That was the first one, I think, where we stand.
I mean, they're...
I can accept any...
Right. No. No, you don't even accept this road. You have to establish the commissioners' court. I mean, you can change... I mean, I, we've always, the court's always taken the... Try to be consistent about that, because that's kind of what you want to do. There may be a reason underneath that action 2011, that it's just not recorded in the maintenance, but assumptions got deep that commissioners have a reasonable rent rational basis within the... That's left. So what happened in 2011 is not binding on what the court would view of this case at this point.
Have we pulled the audio from 2011 to at least hear the discussion around?
We don't have it anymore.
We don't want it to get to your attention.
Yeah, I leave it to you.
If we're commissioners?
So is that, does that tickle your memory at all?
Tickle my memory?
Was there a...
I remember it. I really remember it. This brings us to me a question of whether we can do the same thing with these people that we deal with, Bishop Stays. You know, say, yo, is that right, Bishop Stays? They'll will pay to maintain or to fix your roads if you will somehow pay us back. You know, is that an option that we could do that for all these other roads around here?
Well, that's the letter. Is that the letter that you sent out, Dave?
That's what the letter actually said.
We do the same thing as Bishop Franks.
So we talked about how many homes under?
Yeah, yeah. There's 13 property...
13.
There are 13 property owners, not that many. They're probably about that many pieces of property too, because some of them just going by the tax. You know, they're both on, some people on the Black Business Stoos, and more than one lot out there. So I don't know. I'm guessing there are about 10 houses out there, is that correct? Or more of a Riker Road side. So, yes, state statutes allows any development to petition us to fix their roads if it's not under our current maintenance. But they vote like they did at Bishop Ranches. They agree to pay all their part of that fix out to bring it up to standards. And that can be done, or else we can say, as a commissioners' court, we're going to accept it. Yeah. Those are the two ways. That's it.
So either way, we can say in question.
Yes, we will.
Well, on the commissioners' project, we've already established...
That's state statute, yeah. Let me do that.
Yeah, law of the state statute. It's cool.
If you want to make sure, if you want to have the owners pay for a shared road and be able to enforce that, you need to build it with the statutes.
Right, right. I think there's a couple more people. Y'all want to place them? Okay, come on in. The question I have...
Call us. I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Gonzalez, 10628 Riker. Can you come to the podium, please? I'm sorry. The question I have is, the people that don't live out there, that have property, are they included in all of this also, or just the ones that actually live out there?
It is property owners under the law. So whether they own, even they absentee owners who have it just for investment or just a weekend thing, or they're planning to do out there, the owners of property all pay their portion share whether they did out there.
Okay, it would be over the 10-year period?
Right, that's up to commissioners' court. That's 10 years to what they did on the last project. And I'm sorry, how is your name here?
I'm Gonzalez.
Okay, okay, good, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Our question is from the apartment, this is kind of a health report on the later.
Could you tell us your name, please?
Anna, yes.
How many just estimate?
Twenty-seven. Twenty-seven thousand, I believe that. Twenty-seven thousand, or twenty-two.
Okay, is this figure, you know, for just the area that we own, or?
That's from the beginning, where the state left off, that's the state pavement. Go in from there to the end of the class.
Okay. I was just wondering, you know, because I didn't know, the letter states, you know, that there could possibly be like an additional $20,000 cost, you know, due to labor and equipment and so forth. And we're just wondering if, if this amount would be divided between, like, you know, several property owners, or if this was like our part except...
Oh, no, it'll be divided. It'll be divided up for what kind of property you own and where it's okay, how much it... Over the run.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, that's all that we wanted to ask.
The last project that did this, they took into account the property values, the distance of the road that affected your property. What was the third one?
The even split.
Oh, the even split. Even. So anyway, there was a little formula that was put together. So it came out appropriately for the value of your property based on the distance and also making sure everybody had some equal share. Okay. Yeah.
Dave, would it be possible, like, in terms of the next step, just based on the questions, is to outline what it would look like? You know, it would go to a vote. It would be divided, just kind of a couple steps. And if we applied that same formula to the tax value so that each individual property owner could get a feeling for what it might cost? owner could get a feeling for what it might cost them? Because I think that's your question, is we see this big number, but we don't really know what it means to us. And so if we could just, just for the sake of discussion, apply a similar formula, so that you can look at it and go, is that a lot, is that a little bit, you know, that kind of thing?
Yeah, I, I don't know exactly what formula they used, because added Bishop Branches, because they did it themselves. And they just, they just told us, or number ways, number ways you could do it, uh, by acres, as Leon said, by acreage, by, by footage long road, uh, that's, you know, something you'd already stated before. Yeah, the formula's there, if that's what you wanted to use. But that, that's up to the, to you. If you just divided it equally, if it says twenty or thirty thousand, make it thirty thousand, thirty thousand over, divided by thirteen as well. And then divide that by how many per years we give you. If it's ten years, it's not going to be a lot.
So thirty thousand divided by thirteen, divided by ten years, two hundred and thirty one dollars. And I'm rounding and this is just.
That's if everybody made it.
Two hundred and thirty one per year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Um, Gary, I want to pick, uh, ten, six, one, four, Roger. Um, actually, I pulled up the, the presentation, twenty-two different lots out there. One of the questions I had, and I think somebody's been interested by Leon, as far as is it prorated for tract or per owner? Because one owner owns six of the properties. So, uh, and I think probably, I, I looked at chapter two fifty-three and mentioned something as far as the votes taken by the property owners. Would we have the formula and the cost before that vote?
Yes. We, we, what, what will happen procedurally if the commissioners want to go forward is that we would have to have one more official kind of public meeting of our intended takeover of Riker. And then in that meeting, commissioners would decide whether to go forward with the project or not. At that point, we can send a letter out to each of the property owners. We would, and if the vote is, they can choose to go yes or no. And then if the majority voted, then the commissioners decide how long the procedure, you know, how long to pay it out, and, you know, the details of it. And so when you voted, you would know how much you would be paying. Might be paying it over a ten year period, or whatever, you want, whatever we decided to do, that, that you would know what your total obligation would be before you vote.
One thing that I do think is a little slippery, just to be clear, Dave, keep me in line here. When the votes come in, it's the majority of who turns in the votes, not, like, who turns in the ballots, not the majority of the people that live there. Is that right? Okay, so that's a little slippery, so I just want to be honest about that.
So does each member, each person owns lots out there?
Yes.
Having a vote, not a thing on the per lot.
Uh, no, it's every person who owns. And, and so the, the proportionate comes in as far as the cost. So what, what costs are good to pay. Every, every property owner gets a vote. So tracks, vote for me, tracks out there owned by husband and wife, each person, each husband and wife, each get a vote.
All right. Let's see if we can move forward. We'll see how it goes.
I do think the formula, um, in terms of acreage, I'm looking at Commissioner Church here, which is not my expertise at all, but I do think the formula of, um, dividing based on how big the lot is, it, you know, adds to the, if I have a, a smaller sliced lot and I'm paying the same as someone that owns three times as much on that property, I would, yeah, so I'm, I'm thinking through what that formula is. And I, we have a printout, and I think they gave us the formula on the printout, so we could look at a couple of options, because I can see if I'm a property owner and I own a smaller share, I want to just take kind of my smaller share.
Yeah, it's only reasonable that if there's a million dollar house out there, that they'd pay a little more, or they'd pay more.
Yeah, and I'm taking more footprints or.
Thirty thousand.
As mentioned, and one person had six lots out there, and the person getting six votes?
No.
No.
But property has been.
Okay, Sebastian, do you have anything else you want to add?
No, I did mention, uh, the last court that was mentioned, draft that you put down. But if we're going to do it, we need to do it to where against so-called or so-called in the future. So that's probably adequate question, as far as the cleavage draft, but just put down cleavage, uh, other than that.
And this list of roads, are we going to do anything with that, or just?
Uh, just for information.
These are the ones that are going forward.
Yeah, this is just the rest of the, the black, the blacklist is the risk that we maintain all the roads, pretty much. And the other list is a list of care keeps for auditing purposes. And a lot of those are roads that are mainly, but if you go out there, there's nothing after. So they're not maintained. So the blacklist that I have, this is the list that we maintain.
Thank you, sir. So, so then for today, we will just, we will wait. Oh, sorry. You were mentioning if the lots were wider. Okay, what if you had one lot that's a little wider, but it's shorter than the other lots that are married or longer?
Yeah, and I was just, I was just saying that, just in the form of discussion, I think that would be about.
It would, it would have to do with the value of the property. Okay, red, it's the size. That's what I'll leave base.
Okay, so Dave, we're going to wait until we hear her back then, before we go forward?
Yeah.
Okay, so, no, I actually take it.
I'll, I'll put it on the agenda for next time, and then you can decide what you want.
Okay. Just in terms of the public that's attending, so our next court will be actually at the Santa Fe building. It's our government day, so we'll have students sitting up there with us, so don't think we doubled in size. Um, but just logistically, so if you're planning to attend the next one, it's the Santa Fe Auditorium, eleventh floor.
Yes, and we will all receive notification that prior to listening.
Uh, probably not at this next meeting, because it's just, it's just a chance to make sure anybody who hasn't had a chance to speak, we get to hear from them. But we, we'll have to have a formal hearing after that. We'll get those, make sure.
Yeah, only one is the Santa Fe building, what date is it?
It's April the ninth, and at nine o'clock, just like normal. The only thing that's changing is our location, so we can accommodate all the students that are coming in. We're left at nine, nine even. Thank you, Anthony.
Leon, second thought, uh, if the commissioners are interested in going forward with this, why don't we just go ahead and schedule that for a public hearing on the next meeting?
Okay.
Is that all right with you, the court?
We have the formula and all that to evaluate.
Yeah, I'll try.
You'll try?
This is a short time this morning.
On the other end, so.
So if we go into the eleven, it'll, I mean, this one is here.
Yes, it, yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll, we'll go, yes. Uh, the next, the public hearing on this matter will be on the, uh, on the next meeting on the eleventh, so I'll, I'll try and remember to send out a letter.
Okay, thank you. So Dave, do you need action to establish the public hearing?
Yes, please, please.
Okay, so we need a motion, and a second, please.
I, uh, I move that we hold a public meeting for the purpose of determining whether to proceed with Riker Lane as a county maintained road, with that public hearing to be held April eleventh at our regular commissioners' court meeting. Santa Fe building to Monday, February.
Dave, just a quick question, does the motion need to include the statute that we're trying to, because we're not just taking on this county roads?
Uh, I, no, I, I don't think you need to.
So we're just going to talk about Riker Lane on this, and not any, any other?
Yes.
I need a second.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? On my favor, Rachel, right here. I'm going to say.
At the Santa Fe, the Santa Fe.
Number ten, elections to, A, to approve the order establishing early voting judges, locations and hours for the May twenty-four primary runoff election. B, to approve the order according to early voting ballot board, judge for the May twenty-four primary runoff election. And C, to acknowledge the officers for central counting station for the May twenty-four primary runoff election.
Good morning. We're having a small runoff election on May twenty-fourth. There's one thing on the ballot on the Democratic primary, and that is the railroad commissioner, and there are three things on the ballot for the Republican primary, railroad commissioner, judge of criminal appeals court, or place two, and place five, something like that. And so, um, these are the locations. One thing to note is that in August, we will be regaling judges, as well as clerks, and we work with party chairs, and people who, um, so there will be some changes that are going to be coming about. And, um, you know, you guys know some great folks, that'd be, they have some really good judges and clerks. Um, you'll notice obviously that we have Grace Community Church replacing the Democrat stop, this is a temporary thing, it didn't work for them forever. Well, and I don't know, I've asked Aaron at the Democrat stop, and I've read a lot, I've not heard that from her, but at this point, I do not have a location for the presidential. Um, and we'll be out to be in the mission's twenty-five, twenty-five place.
I bet, I bet you need to take.
We can need to go and ask.
You didn't have to buy it.
He has a lifetime card. I've seen this. It's real, yeah.
So, there, these are our judges. Also, uh, by law, we have, the county has to pay for early voting in primary. The parties pay for election day, but all of our workers, everything for early voting is at our expense. But the Santa Fe building will be open for seven to seven for that weekend, and again, designated by the Secretary of State's office. The others, um, I put down here twelve to four. We have done twelve to five at times in these locations, because this is going to be, I expected such a low turnout, I'm trying to save just a buck grand hand for the county.
And none of these, none of these runoffs are local people, so?
No, none are local.
Okay, so, um, you have a motion and an order for, motion and a second for all three of these. Are you going to go separate?
I think we'll all get it. You have any questions about the others? Ballot board, we have, we have ballots by mail, we're still mailing out the same number we mailed up the last time. Again, with there being so little on the ballot, I don't know how many people will stand on it and mail it back. So, um, I don't have, we may not be using all of those clerks even, you know, we're just going to see what goes, what does come back on that.
Is there still a need to, uh, go to Assory Brown?
No, there is not for this one especially. We'll be, and we're going to be watching, getting them signed up for about that mail with the, where is that? Assory Brown is.
It's the, uh.
The state.
I, uh, I motion to approve the order establishing early voting judges, locations noted on the, also to approve the order according to early voting ballot box, voted, voted for the May twenty-four primary elections, and, uh, also to acknowledge the officers for central counting station for the May twenty-four primaries.
Okay, and a second?
Sorry.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, please, you're ready? Number eleven, Florida County Projects, Mike, do you have, I think you have one thing you want to talk about, or a couple?
That's settled out, it's the way to make you aware of, it will not be given a report next month. The Sheriff's Department projects, uh, we're actually finishing the implementation this week, we're twenty-four days ahead of schedule on that project. Uh, we're in fifty percent construction document review at this time. Uh, we hope to have it completed a hundred percent somewhere around mid May. Uh, fire station, if you hadn't had a chance to go out there, the steel's going up. Uh, due to wind last week, got kind of shut down for a while, they hope to complete all steel erection this week. The, uh, well, uh, was installed last week, we do have good water out there. Uh, we had depths of seventy foot of water, and most wells out there is two hundred and twenty foot. So we've got a hundred foot of water, uh, of the wellhead. The tower projects complete, uh, electrical service was completed, gas will be going in this week. Uh, Sebastian, they'll begin with you sometime this week in order to start building your road, or your driveway up out there. The Fairgrounds Health Project, one in the twenty thirteen storm, just to make you aware of where we currently stand on this. Uh, the last, uh, presentation I made to you, I made you aware that the bids that we currently had out there, we actually pulled those bids, and we kind of started all over based off the structural, refit structural engineer report. The Cody building does not need metal parking support, structure support, it's nothing more than just a typical roofing project. So, uh, Ms. Shelton and her staff has put the bids out, and the first notice went out last Friday, the next one will be this Friday. We have a pre-bid walk, mandatory pre-bid walk through out there, May fifth. Uh, one of the questions that will probably be presented at that time is, why do we not do a metal over-laden, two metal roofs in the boot court and the Cody building? I'm just saying that we have been down this road so many times, it seems like we're trying to tailor these projects just to meet the fair board need. The insurance is paying for complete roof replacements and the TPO recover, the max max for buildings, so we're going to stick with that game plan. I'm sorry if any people out there do not like that. We've got to get these projects finished. We're pushing for a July thirty-first deadline for all three projects. Some people say that they believe that cannot happen, it can happen. You get the right people in there, you have these projects completed, you have to have your final invoice in to pack in the later, the first, to open this project. Uh, Virgil has events out there, uh, starting the first of August, September, through, uh, those months with the fair roping events and stuff like this, so that's why the thirty-first deadline has been set. So in case y'all get a call, we're complaining about a decision's been made, we need to move forth to go ahead, add some regional plant and replace this roof and do a recovery.
And Dave, I have a question, so the July first deadline, we, we meet that, I'm anticipating August, I'm sorry, July thirty-first deadline, I'm anticipating August, they now take over their own property insurance, and so I kind of feel like there's some reminder work that needs to happen as we get close to that date, so that I'm.
We just don't, we just don't cover it, they don't, they don't want to cover it, they'll go get it themselves.
Well, should we send a letter to say we're reminding you?
No, that's well, they, they will understand, they will understand. That has been discussed through a lot of the meetings that we. They understand, they understand out there. You know, the agreement was, was a fifty-fifty coverage, that's out of the picture, so the other part was, we will not be doing any repairs on the, the other little buildings out there, that they will do it, and they pick up their own insurance.
I agree, and I, I, and I understand where Richmond feels going with it as well, and to ensure that it doesn't stall on a turn.
Yes. Same, I think a typical roofing project is a gross understatement. I say that in an honest way for the purchasing, and so we can hit their tail off on this as, as many of us have. And it is, if it was a typical roofing project, we would, then we'd a year or half of it. So, good, they've done a great job, they really have done a great job, and that's what I'm talking about.
So logistically, does purchasing just make a call and call Tac and say, take these X amount of properties off, off our coverage? How's that work?
Well, I know from my perspective, I've talked to Steve Lapp, and he's fully aware that they will be taking that over, so I'm going to hear us in the right direction.
I almost, and this may be like an overstatement on ours, but I, I am very aware of the pain kind of behind the scenes, I almost feel like we even need an agenda item to say we have formally removed it, the court took action, so ten years from now, if anybody ever has a question and the audio's not there, then we say the court took this off as a part of the agreement to do the roof. So I, that may be not needed, but it would certainly make me feel better.
And we said we all have done that.
Yeah, but I don't know that it was very, I don't know that it's clear, it's we couldn't.
It was pretty clear. I remember the look on Virgil's face, I remember it pretty well.
Did you remind him when they called and complained about what we were doing? Say, oh yes, by the way, we're not doing what you're saying, don't forget, you're taking over.
I'm sorry.
And I feel as, from a purchasing standpoint, I fully support the recommendation that we keep no changes on this because we already had to rescind one, and so that looks, the county looks like we're indecisive, and we really need to keep this moving because if we make any changes, we will not make that deadline.
Next project, and we'll be bringing this up here in a few moments on the baseball, I mean, on the baseball stadium, I'm going to go ahead and kind of set the stage line. The commissioner's court within the twenty fifteen sixteen budget, y'all allocated a hundred thousand dollars to put for the baseball stadium out there. Through that period, or through that time, I brought reports to you from roof replacements to door replacements to concession stands. We've discussed that out of the hundred thousand dollars, since mighty department is still responsible to do the, to bring the water up and down out there throughout the season, and we are responsible for the electrical and the lighting of the field out there. Remove twelve thousand front end, so your magic number to start, which is eighty-eight thousand for anything that you do out there at the state. I can tell you as of today, I spent six thousand five hundred and two dollars of that twelve thousand dollars. That leaves five thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars for me to finish the season now, and I can tell you right now, the practical work that we have to do out there, that probably could run you anywhere from fourteen to twenty thousand dollars. So, I will bring, I'll address the concession stands here.
Why don't, why don't we go ahead and just go to it? But hang on, there's a guy out in the hall that wants to come in.
There is. If I saw him out there and he didn't want to.
That's good.
Yes.
Regarding that, can you go ahead and present that out?
Yes, yes. Let me read it real fast. This is Iowa's fifth, number fourteen, and enrollment, first of all, thanks for the report number eleven. So, number fourteen is baseball stadium stand projects to consider and act upon approval of the following projects, stadium ground level concession and stadium second level concession.
We do have a gentleman here from the, thanks, Molly, we have Mr. Sean May here from the city environmental help, for any questions that you may have. I'd like to kind of start off here on the concessions. I provided you with the list right there, that is the list that Ms. May had presented to the previous manager of the club, things that they were required to do out there in order to receive a permit. I believe Dave has sent a letter to Mr. May back throughout the year and kind of said, this is what we're going, this is what we're going to do. So, why I want to present today, Mr. Mike, let me show you a part of it.
Mike, can I have one thing, just for clarification? So, on the handouts that Mike gave, the second page, which is concession stand B, that's the bottom. So, you're looking at it comparing it to the dollar, and then the next page, concession stand C, that's the top.
Out of the work that I am presenting today, it's only a small portion of the work that is required out there to, for them in order to receive a permit. Sean, you're more welcome to speak up on this statement. So, if, whatever we have in store on the two concession stands, that list right there, remaining items are things that these kids need to do in order to receive a permit. These things, we walked through, I think Commissioner Church was out there with some master. We walked through this list with Ms. Tucker, went over things that she needed to do in the COVID season. So, as further direction of the commissioner's court, y'all direct me to look at the two concession stands out there, these are considered as two separate projects. The ground level concession stand, if you can envision the ones that's been out there, once, when you walk into those, into either concession stand, you know the condition of them. The ball club, if it's approved today, will go in Thursday. Between now and Thursday, they will clean everything out of those rooms. We will come in, starting April the first, with Commissioner Kelly was out there during our mandatory walkthrough that we had with all the contractors. They will go through, completely strip these rooms down to bare walls, will give it all the wood that's in the rooms. The service counter windows, they will all be torn out, so when you walk back into that room, you will see new freshly hanged ceilings, floors, your service counter windows, windows will be in a limited storefront, new windows on there, screens that actually seal your doors in, do the areas in screen doors, there will be new doors. Plumbing, we will be required to be covered on both plumbing and health. All contractors are required for permits. Sean, I did visit with Larry Spon, that's right, he recorded the project and went over the prints with him, so they're all on board with this. So, ground level concession stand, I've broken the cost out there to you on each scope of work. You have presented project to you just for the ground level of forty-two thousand six hundred forty-three dollars and thirty-one cents. Second level, forty thousand five hundred seventy-three dollars and seven forty cents, and you can see that they're rational, D twenty, if we do not approve this project today, you want to come back to the next court meeting, I can tell you the project deadline will not be reached. From a maintenance perspective, with all due respect, D twenty, you've got a hard job to do, I want to tell you, I feel that you spend this money today as a waste.
Sir, would you like to have?
Would y'all like to say anything? Sean, would you like to say anything?
Sure, I'm here.
Nice to meet you, Mike.
Yes. Nice to meet all of you, thank you for a while we've been speaking to you, for you this morning. I just, when I first came to the ballpark, I was, I was taken aback a little bit by the climate's condition. I understand that with everything involved, that you guys obviously have a difficult decision to make. I think what I would like for you to understand from me is that I am a public health advocate. That is my main focus, it is something that I'm very passionate about, something that I have a great sense of responsibility. So, when I went out there, I assessed it based upon the level of food operation that was going on, and in that assessment, really what I used was the Texas Food Establishment Rules, what are the minimum requirements to, to convey food to the public. And so, that essentially, I didn't really even get really into operationally, how they were doing things, it was really about the infrastructure. Because the idea is in food safety, is that if you put the infrastructure in there, make things easily, make sure that we're retaining temperatures from the hot and cold, that if we get, at least get the infrastructure for it, that, that operationally, it becomes easier. And the easier it is to keep people safe, the better it is for the, for the public health of the city. I just wanted to share that with you and answer any questions that you may have.
Sean, I do have a question. So, as it relates, so Mike has given us kind of a handout of just dollar amounts for us to evaluate, the concession stands, the ground and the second level. And just to make sure I'm clear, as it relates to the concession areas, these, whatever improvements are done, this will be to serve food out of, not to prep food inside. Is that a correct assessment on my end?
Well, what I understand is that there would be some level of food preparation in the main concession stand. I'm still, I've gone through some of the information from the vendor that's going to be out there. I think the, the idea is to limit the amount of food preparation to as much as possible because what ends up happening is, with more, the more food preparation that goes on there, the higher level of complexity that things become, and then, and then we get into, start getting into different types of equipment and so forth and so on. So, I think the idea is to try to kind of reach this delicate balance between keeping the, the operations as, as minimal as possible, but also certain needs of vendors and so forth. So, it's a little bit of a balance, but I, I would say overall, that's true, that we're not in a traditional sense like a restaurant, taking raw food products and, and, you know, preparing them in, in that definition to, to serve, so.
Okay.
Help me understand, I'll do. Big concession stand that was opened back up this last year, this behind the party head. Yeah. Now, is that one of these?
No. This is strictly stadium beneath the stadium, the ground level and second level, all against the rest.
The upper level was not opened at all last year, if I remember.
I don't think it was, Commissioner Church.
So, they served something out of the, the lower level?
Yes.
Nothing up.
Yeah, the upper above was probably the, the worst condition of all three. So, the one below, the smaller one below, I was not overly thrilled with either, but in, in line of cooperation, what I said to him was that I would allow him to do some single service prepackaged on potentially the aspect.
Now, is the trailer still out there? Is the trailer part of this?
No. I, so.
Yep. Do you get to keep the trailer?
No, I think that belongs to.
Especially Tucker.
But I think there is a discussion of how, and I don't, I certainly don't want to speak for Southern Independent, I just want to make sure everybody has the information. I think there is discussion between Southern Independent and Ms. Tucker on how that trailer can still be used for the seasons to come. So, I don't think it's out of the picture is what I want to communicate.
That's what John, Mr. Phil, will explain. I just thought what happens here today, he does have a package.
So, what's in the trailer, do you cook?
They actually cooked it.
They actually cooked.
You had, it was fermented.
Okay. So, why can't they just use that instead of the concession at all, just use that trailer?
It, it's, that's not a decision for me to make, that's a decision for.
I know.
I think the trailer was.
It's in the, it's in the bag.
Yeah, it's, it wasn't served, I mean, it was just used for preparation.
Preparation.
We're doing some frying, doing some different things like that.
Right.
Cooking. So, they were taking raw products and cooking them out there, which is more than.
And bringing it to them?
Yes, ma'am. That's right.
And so, I know Commissioner Kelly has, has toured the facility and attended some meetings in my absence, so thank you for that. One thing that I would at least recommend to the court with consideration, and I did discuss this with Mike, is addressing the ground level, which is at the forty-two thousand, and the reason I feel like that, I mean, this isn't our budget today, I'm very mindful, obviously, of taxpayer dollars. I feel like everybody on this court, you know, knows that, but I'm very mindful of the dollars. And the reality is, we have a team that is coming into that stadium, and I would venture to say for at least a couple more years. We did this through budget process, we sent a letter, October twelfth of twenty fifteen to the city to say, Mr. Sean May, we're by accounting, we're, this is a partnership, we get it, we got the list, and we're going to do our best to address it. I certainly see the concern with the level, second level. I think I would agree with Mr. Church, I think that's kind of above the scope, it wasn't open last year, but I think in good fairness to a partner that we do have and a contractor we have, we have committed to addressing one of the concession stands. So, I just, I wanted to give everybody that framework because it has been some time. I don't know if you want to add anything, Commissioner Kelly?
Well, we had the, Mr. Noon came in from Cincinnati, and I think he's part of the.
The B and D.
B and D company. And I must admit, he was totally unimpressed with our stadium. He, he felt like if you put any money into that stadium, you're wasted. So, and this is, this is a guy that has done these kinds of things throughout, throughout the coun, throughout the country, so he's very knowledgeable.
So, understanding what Commissioner feels, kind of, we've already pretty much agreed, we have established a commitment, a league, a partnership that you addressed, but at the same time, same token, we know that this is a short span of time, and are we looking to those, the taxpayer funds for something that is going to be extremely limited, but probably more than two years, if, if it is? Is that a good use of the, the funds that we are trying to allocate to political express purpose if it seems sort of helpless to get as far as moving forward right now?
There, there are some, there's some equipment out there already that Ms. Tucker owns. Is there any way to incorporate those items, majorant them or buy them, broker, on behalf of ballpark, under the team?
I think that.
All that I was aware of, the agreement was that Mr. Bill would explain to me regarding the kitchen that Sean has looked at, that that would be his backup plan to utilize it if the court did not move forward with anything happening here in the concession stand.
I would certainly encourage that.
And I did follow up with Ms. Tucker after our walkthrough, and I think the only, and I don't want to speak for her, but the only item she referenced that was hers was that trailer. Everything else was the leagues at that point, and they were going through a process of inventory, I might call it figuring out who owns what, so that it's cleared on their books, and it was John that we were working with, the Southern Independent. And, and to your comment, Commissioner Vaughn, and I, I get it, I think it's absolutely good discussion point of the taxpayer dollars, and I think the reality is, though, that we do have a facility, and we have a facility there still in existence, and we're allowing a partnership to still continue. And so, I think from a business perspective, I can certainly see an argument, you know, from Southern Independent, where we are retracting from a commitment that we did make, we fist the league via the budget and via a documented letter to say, we as a court want a partner.
Which their enthusiasm was not solid like. At the, I understand the point, and the facility that's a shale, but it's not actually a facility that, that I would consider that, that definite, but it's, to me, it deserves further discussion. I know we're on this charge.
What exactly was our commitment? What did we commit?
I can be, I have to.
We did twenty-five games and then college, et cetera, but fifteen, twenty-five.
Twenty-five after games, and then the remainder.
Collegiate games, thirty games.
Did we sign, did we sign into contract with them or did we?
No, that was just verbal.
So, what's the key information in mind?
No, I'm just, I'm just speaking to the letter that we sent to the city of Amarillo to Sean specifically to say, we, we get it, there's issues with the concession, and we're going to address them in, in coordination with Southern Independent, that's.
I think Commissioner Kelly was talking about the actual contract with the team.
Oh, yeah, no, he doesn't reference, there's no, there's nothing in the contract of number of games, and Dave, can you be honest here, contractually, the only thing they have to do to meet their end of the lease is make the improvements. That's, that's the everything in our contract, we don't have anything with, they have to use the property, it has to be open, X number of games, nothing.
And, and, and I'll be sure of the commitment of the, of the improvements.
That's probably. Well, Stephanie did roll over quite a bit of dollar, I, I just, I don't think it's going to take them much, Southern Independent, to meet this year of their financial obligation on the contract, because so much will.
They're in a game this time of year, so.
So, I do think.
They're in a game from commitment to. Right. Which is, yeah, we've been over that for hours and hours, and we're pretty confident that, that, very conservative, so they're, I'm not worried enough to have.
I guess one thing that I'm concerned about is, if we choose not to do anything, which to me, I think that'd be a mistake, and we did, we did nothing. But would the baseball team back out altogether?
That's a possibility.
As a landowner, for Marvin Saxon, that's renting to some, certainly have some responsibility to have a facility that can be used, to say that all we're doing is saying we need it in general, you know, I'd be like.
Let me, let me.
I, I, this is going to surprise Commissioner, I agree.
I am quite surprised, actually.
I agree with the ground level.
And the reference, I agree, it's all the comments right here.
Mike, you have something to say?
You know, the condition of the baseball stadium last year was nothing, you, they that's had this for many years, they know the condition of the stadium, year after year, year after year. We as a county try to go out and nickel and dime and put this together. You know, nearly thirteen years ago, I took possession of that stadium, at that time, three point four million dollars, I presented to the commissioner's court, give me that money, and we put it back into the stadium to at least repair the state. At that point there, you, they, the assessment that was done, you had by critical elements that needed to be done. They all dealt with the infrastructure, the structure itself, you know, we wouldn't, the latter part of it was cosmetics, what is it? Nothing has actually been done to protect the integrity of the structure, infrastructure. So, as far as the league, they have had, they have known the condition of the stadium.
Well, what I would, I would say to that, Mike, is if this was an agenda item to address, changing it to Turf or millions. Well, what I would, I would say to that, Mike, is if this was an agenda item to address, changing it to turd or millions of dollars, I mean, I think that's an absolute, completely different conversation strategically, what's happening to that property. This to me, I see as an operational thing, that we do have the property, we are the lessor. And so we do fundamentally have at least some responsibility to do something. And we have communicated our intent to do that. And so I think it certainly doesn't speak to this court that we get this down the road. And we, we, I mean, we knew that, we knew it was Southern Independent, that we were, had the contract, there's nothing new to us.
I agree, I agree, I think you're right, but the key word is something. We're just focusing on the aesthetics, the infrastructure per se. Anyone that has any layman's perspective on playing ball and go out there and walk that field, go out there and actually just take a, a walk in the outfield and see, there's so many issues that to me concerns safety of, of the individuals themselves playing the ball out there. So I think we have to look a little bit more deeper than just the aesthetics and the infrastructure per se, that it involves a larger conversation.
Yeah, I agree. I, to be honest here, I would consider the proposed changes some infrastructure changes. I mean, we're not talking about just paint, you're talking about infrastructure changes to the concession.
And how do the other courts? Y'all asked a question about when, I think you, they might want to say something. You want to speak on behalf of, you know, if the court does not move forward with this work?
Who are they with, Mike? I'm sorry.
This, they're with the league.
Okay. With Southern Independent or?
Emerald, Emerald. The Emerald part of it, that is.
The collegiate league?
Which, no, no, the professional part.
Okay.
And, and now, anything I can say is if, if they don't do the improvements, there's nothing that says that we won't have baseball here this year. Because right now, it's a torn picture, they play twenty-five games here, twenty-five in Grand Prairie. If this isn't done, there's nothing to say that Grand Prairie backs out then, there won't be any baseball. I do think we need baseball here because the plan is twenty-five games here next year, this year, and then to come back with Emerald's team again next year. And if we, if we back out of this, I don't know, that'll happen.
And your name, sir? I'm sorry.
Steve Fowler.
So Steve, you're, you're not with Southern?
No, I'm not with Southern Independent, I'm, I'm with, actually, the Texas Airwalk, Steve. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm the general manager of the Emerald part of that team.
I see.
Okay. I don't believe Maggie yet.
No.
Okay.
So you're the general manager of the local?
Yes.
Okay.
So you're saying if there's no baseball this year, that it's, it's going to go?
I'm not saying that, definitely no, I'm saying that's a possibility.
Possibility. So this year, twenty-five games that they, we've agreed to let them play are for the Grand Prairie team.
Correct.
What's called the Texas Airwalks. We're sharing a team this year.
Right.
Sharing a team.
And the thirty collegiate is what I have in my notes, also the thirty collegiate games. That's a new initiative to bring collegiate.
Right, and that's, that's a big initiative kind of for us.
And they, we, the gentleman, the man who's like, did tour us.
So just to have a question, an outlier question, kind of, in your perspective, as to the GM, do you feel, uh, what are your thoughts as far as having building a team this year for those twenty-five games? Do you feel comfortable in what, irrespective of the concessions, but actually have building a team, having to play this year?
Having to play the twenty-five games here. I mean, I think it's a good idea.
No, I'm not talking about the idea, I'm talking about the concept of actually playing in the stadium. Your, your players.
Yeah, I mean, I will tell you, and be honest with you, in the last couple of years, I've been to a lot of the other ballparks that may be stayed. Parts doesn't compare really.
I don't think that's a surprise to anyone.
Right, right. I mean, you know, and, and, yeah, the outfield is not in good shape. We do have a groundskeeper out there that's been out there working the last three weeks. And the field is probably in better shape now than it has been at any point at this time of the year. I mean, you're working, I mean, it's, it's, he's got it. Or what it is.
So you're comfortable with the commissioner's concerns about the field and the issues, what's going to get injured up?
So far. You know, I mean, we'll see how it works out up until when we're supposed to play. But, you know, I mean, he's, he's, he's really done a good job.
And I have been, I've been a few weeks, so, but when I was there, in my, 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 I was the GM, very, I doubt.
I mean, it does, you know, some, some work in the outfield definitely wouldn't hurt, you know, as far as, because there's, there's. And a whole lot to do about that.
So the money that we have to spend is literally just on the concession?
Yes.
That's all.
That would be the commitment.
And what we would be looking for, just, just to be clear, and I don't know if this question would go to you, Steve, or John, who, you know, kind of have been working in the interim. So there's this laundry list of other things that need to be done. And so one thing that I don't think we're clear on, and Mike, to be honest here, we, we want to make sure that Southern Independent is going to do kind of the laundry list. So we're doing the infrastructure. There's other things that need to be done.
What, what are you speaking of?
You can have a stop here.
I'll listen. We are doing, we're not doing any of this here.
Yes.
And you can have this copy if you need, sir.
Yes.
And you don't have to commit to that certainly today, just looking at this on the fly. But I just wanted to be clear that if the court does move forward with a concession, that there, we, we, I think, would be assuming that Southern Independent would also be taking on the additional repairs that are needed, because this is not in our scope.
And, and, and I would say some yes, but I would also have to speak to John.
Yes. And John has seen this list.
I've given it to you.
So, so given where we want to be, there have been some improvements in the outfield. There are going to be further improvements, I guess it's, it's an ongoing process being now.
The, the actual first game here is not to what you can say. So we have ample time.
So the, the plan has been devised, Mike, do, do you feel comfortable in that being, kind of, as far as, you know, the field, the preparation and the building of the field of having that ready for you?
I had not seen anything on the field, the thing when you and I was out there, that day, we did not see the action.
If we don't take this, we're not.
I understand, but to me, it feels, I don't understand that.
Let me back track, because the first professional game was June six. There is a tournament, it's a showcase tournament of some sort, made by the field, seven or six, maybe eight, nine. So that would be.
So I guess the question would be, Mike, if the court decides to spend money on that one concession on the model level, would you have time to get it?
Say.
Put it out in May, the fifth.
I mean, if that, probably say yes, that's just something major happened out there. The timeframe I've given you is, I think you can see a little ground level, was forty-two, forty-two days. We have to speed everything up. I mean, there.
And I don't think there's a requirement that we have it, I mean, I think ideally we would, but I don't think there's a requirement. I, I, I don't want to speak for Southern Independent, but I think they have seen our commitment by touring and Mike's commitment trying to get this done. So I don't think it's a deal breaker if it's not done, but we know that it's kind of in the.
Right, and, and that thing, that, that, play the field tournament, what, what, that day is, is really nothing to do with us. So, I mean, and we were under the understanding already that it probably wouldn't be great done that time.
Carrie, what account do we have the eighty-eight thousand allocated? I don't know where that kind of lives, is it just in the baseball?
Something based on.
It's in my.
Well, I was thinking about that, yeah, what we do, if we have everyone that comes, be why we'll be. That way we don't have to do the concession.
Sheriff, are you listening?
Bear, thanks for the bear.
I'd like to make a motion. And I'd like to make a motion that the court approve the ground level concession stand only and funds to come from the building and repair account as budgeted.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second for the ground level concession only. All of them are registered in. On the against. Three, two. Any passes?
We'll get everything started today on the ground level concessions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
That's fine. It's good to play.
I'd be coming way before flowers than I want to be.
You're one of those, when he should look like bees.
Yes.
Okay, now you're still.
You had it on the project, county distinction, our nothing, where you're preparing to meet in April. The quarry project and the side drainage landscape, that particular cost is due this Thursday. At that time, we'll look at having it, if it's okay, we get presented to the commissioners' court, it could be the first meeting in May. Central fire station fire, that did occur yesterday, I'd like to visit with you on, just to kind of bring up the speed of where we stand right now. The state fire marshal did come in and look at it, they have not rendered a cause for the fire just yet. I've, I've worked with Vicky, one thing we're looking to do, I've already visited with Steve Lapp this morning. The state fire marshal wants to look into it with our insurance inspectors. I was also doing the assessment, and at the same time, Mr. Corey Rabbit's shirt department, he would like to be there. He's the one that has all the photographs of it. They did remove the items from the damaged fire scene area yesterday into an area where it is secured at this time. Regarding the insurance perspective, what I would ask, just to start doing right now, Vicky, if you could please look into the cost to acquire a large construction type job trailers that has the three offices in it, just at least get the cost, get that going right now. And what it would take to set one out there. Once we are released from all the inspections and the insurance companies on board with us, we've got to get them an office to utilize out there, and I talked to Richard and Pat lately, they would prefer to stay out there because their fire trucks are very easy to respond instead of getting placed on the rest of the town. Once we're released from the insurance company, one of the first and first things I would recommend to do is to bring in our electrical contractors to do an hour testing on all of the electrical that is within the building to tell what is damaged. The hot spot that once expanded the fire station was actually in the kitchen area. You have a lot of electrical infrastructure that roused from there into the fire apparatus. The, the firewall that separates the apparatus bay from the admin actually protected the west portion of the building. So we would need to go through with our insurance, look to get all that cleaned up. Building did receive water, smoke, and fire damage in the building. So what they would like to do is at least get the apparatus bay back in operation to where they can pull these trucks in now. Then they would have their office building out there. And as things are either cleaned, repaired, or replaced through the insurance company and the admin side bringing it into the trailer, that way they can start setting their offices back up inside there. So nothing is going to happen overnight. We have a little ways down the road before they even could consider to get into the building. There was significant damage within the administrative part. A lot of it was smoke and water damage. We just need to visit with the insurance company to see what they would work with us on that, how to address that. They do have some construction remodel out that will be required within there. We definitely need to look at the structure and entirety of the building, where the fire was beneath it, below, just to make sure everything's safe. And that's, hopefully today, we'll be meeting with everybody out there to kind of go back through the reassess the situation. In addition to that, Fire Station Three project. If you recall, we presented the cost to you on the opinion of probable cause at that time. We were, we, it was originally going to be planned to put in a fire suppression system. That portion of the work was cut out, it was a little lower quarter of a million dollars. So right now, your Fire Station Three does not have any fire suppression system in it. Your Fire Station Three does have fire detection. It does not go anywhere, it's just of all the type of alarm system that's within the building to protect the lives of the building owners. The only buildings that you currently have right now that is on fire detection and being monitored is District Courts, Santa Fe, County Courthouse, Insurance Department Dispatch currently monitors those fire detection offices.
Mike, a question, as it relates to a fire suppression, just from a layman's perspective, are you saying sprinklers?
Sure.
Okay, sure. You're saying the new station doesn't have it in it, we just have detectors and alarms?
It was removed from the actual scope of work, bagged it right around, we brought that to the community, it was right around quarter million dollars.
Mike, let me ask you a question, if you could give me a ballpark figure on the damage to the central station?
I briefly looked at it yesterday, Commissioner Kelly, I need to go back out there and get in depth. It was getting dark whenever we were out there, it turned to twenty-five thousand dollars, he ducked over, I believe the county has fuel, like sixty or twenty-five thousand for sure. You'd have to look at the cost of all the, the electrical, the cleaning, if it can be done within the building. We have walls that actually, the sheet rock got hot enough to burn the sheet rock, roof structure, we need to look at it.
Other posters were burnt off the wall, computers were destroyed, the.
From water, smoke, all of those things need to be, but I, right now, I hate to just.
The reason I ask is because to me, it would be worth the money you spent on this right now, to have that thing.
Fire suppression, suppression, yeah.
Now would be a good time to get that done, right?
Later, maybe the time to do it.
It's a lot of money, but.
We're going to argue for that, one of these ideas, arguing from the point initially, to, to keep that.
And I think, oh, sir.
You know, this makes sense, and, and things do happen, they can happen, it's actually realization.
Well, Judge, I have a question, and.
You may be fighting from the beginning to the end, along to, to add it.
Do we at any point in the future anticipate a new station being the central fire station? Is that its potential life? And I'm, I'm just thinking, yes, and I'm thinking of the build effort and what's in it, and training classrooms and those kind of things as part of the scope. We loosely said, you know, at some point, it could turn into the new central station. Is that even still being discussed? Because I think, to me, that's important to know as we look at the fires.
Because of the location, I'm not sure.
Well, I was thinking more of what's considered in the scope of operations.
Richard, and, and I may have presented y'all with a kind of a, me and you kind of list of what they were hoping to do with their fire stations last year. Where you go from here on all your fire stations.
Did they ever say anything about the Socky Street becoming the city?
No, that was, I think they, I hate to speak for them, but I understand they were looking for it to be kind of the west side, and you need one on the east side. Fire Station Five, they caught a fire yesterday, they would like to go in and eventually remodel that to better adapt their usage of the buildings and stuff. So it was kind of in that presentation that they presented to the commissioners.
But you're saying, Mike, that outside of just a couple of buildings that the county has under our umbrella, the majority of them do not have this fire suppression system?
You don't have a single fire.
Okay, so that's, so it's a bigger conversation than just this one station? As we evaluate station to station, it's going to be a topic.
One of the issues, if you recall, if you put the fire suppression, you've got to have the capacity of water in order to suppress the fire. One of the big cost items was the type of pumps and the capacity to hold water there. And, and our mountain's a good example, you've been out there, those large storage tanks on the east side, that's their holding tanks just for the fire suppression. You will see some debris centering that out at the fire station. will see some debris centering that out at the fire station. Uh, since that was removed from the project, the actual area required for the pumps and stuff is being used for some of their extractors, uh, their air compressor equipment, so as it stands right now, we do not have an area designed in the building to come in and put in what's called a tree, the infrastructure that branches out to all your sprinklers, we do not have space currently in the building for that.
Since you like to go back.
I think if you're going to do something else, then you need to do it, because you've got the steel going up now, you replace a change order with the, uh, architect, kind of back up and make sure we get everything designed properly, and then receive a cost from your general contractor to present to the court.
You said they had some help? Quarter of a million?
Quarter, well, say, Corey, I, if I'm not mistaken, I was trying to pull those numbers this morning, just didn't have enough time, I recall it was around a quarter million dollars, just for that, that's when it was going to be built.
Because we said, we have a fire in the fire station.
I remember karma coming back to me, because I said, the fire station catches on fire.
Well, if we can't go to, to that kind of system, then we need something that can alert us that there's problems, you know?
Uh, Jackson School, uh, one thing that we had talked about, uh, or looked at, I mean, currently right now, the sheriff and their dispatch monitors is, is whenever they move out to the airbase, uh, their new building out there is to try to seek the services to where we can take this away from your dispatch monitoring this fire detector intrusion and essential location. I think one of the rea, one of the issues was the copper, you know, you got fire going out there, it was a copper, it takes copper to, to send those type of alarms, and that was part of the discussion.
Can I just, I have a question on the new sheriff admin, is the suppression being built in that?
You're in city.
Do you have to require?
So, so the definition of central, other than the central part we can, if it's some of this, I guess, uh, all of our put is in, in those and that, so, uh, all their number of more, uh, personnel.
That's where the chief.
Right.
I had to get your current situation.
Yeah, that'd be where your chief be located.
So I think.
He was thinking, I, I mean, I'm speaking out there too, because I was speaking for them, but I was thinking, he was thinking of putting two people over here, but I guess I'm keeping that as a central for you.
Yeah, because I kind of looked at, what I understood, you have two, two sets of areas in the county where they could respond out, Richard, Pat, I don't hate to interrupt you.
Well, I don't think it would hurt anything, because through the process of getting the opinion, the cost, the processes you were talking through, that you'd have to get that to the architect, bring that to the court, I think the very next question would be, as we look to Carrie, certainly I don't expect an answer right now, is where would those dollars come from? But I think for the sake of knowing how much it is, it would be, it would be nice to know and entertain that again.
Yeah, I totally agree, so we'll, can we bring that back next time, to, to, we can't discuss it, we can't vote on it today.
No, I'm just making sure, I don't know, be a thick one, I guess, I had a Richard.
Okay, yes. We did say, bring it, we'll vote on it, we have to, we need to do something, I think we need to do something.
Out of looking at the fire suppression system for the current fire station.
That's usually, by the time people.
I think that's what we try to do, is get that cost reached. So if I have a contract in the middle for part of this, it's a positive.
In my head, it'd be a good idea, at this point in time, to go ahead and look into doing that for the central, which I've got the water creek.
I, I think, I don't know.
Well, I think we have to evaluate what needs to be done on that property, I feel like that's pretty mature, because we don't even know the scope of how bad that property is yet, that's my opinion.
We're not tearing up everything, that's the point. Well, I'd like to, yeah, but I mean, why you have to, please have a look over, just to get some numbers.
Yeah.
And I think that would be then.
That was just a purchasing standpoint. But I'd imagine the cost and the scope would be very different with an existing property, almost like a whole other project versus what's going in and how do you?
That needs to be a discussion, I hope, with the state officials, uh, I mean, though, you know, you're, you're not in the city, so, so it doesn't start at the creek.
Is it in that ETJ though?
It's in the ETJ, if there are times, so they have. I can't, we wouldn't involve in that problem.
But then again, what better time to go ahead and put one in, like, than reading?
I just kind of get more, soak around and assess it, we can tell, or give an assessment of low, and, and, and some numbers.
Okay, thanks, Mike, I appreciate your work.
And I hope you have a good vacation, Mike.
Okay, that's the number twelve now, vehicle transfers, to consider act upon the transfer of vehicles between various departments as follows. I have any backup in the, in the, was there any backup on this, is that, is that for me, Vicky?
Yes, it's for me, I do have Matt Johnson, he can present the information on that, Matt, do you want to, you have any questions that he can clarify, because he has our auction, and basically this is something that we have to do in order to, uh, like I said, Chevrolet Tahoe from, uh, precinct four is going to Roden Bridge, uh, which Sebastian's here too, and can talk to that, and then the, the Tahoe from Roden Bridge will be going to Purchasing, and then the two thousand and three that we have now will, uh, offer a transactional amount to an auction.
So it's just a domino effect, basically? You transfer, transfer, transfer.
Ah, okay. The only question I have, Judge, is as it relates to Constable Precinct Four's Tahoe, I remember physically going to look at it during budget, I mean, she parked it out front, and I remember walking into the Tahoe, I, I don't know the condition, and, and so, Sebastian, I know that's going to Roden Bridge, but, um, I think she was concerned overall safety, I don't know if we should have that in our fleet, I guess.
Yeah.
Well, I'm saying, do you use those?
Different, yeah, different uses, but I, I remember some pretty big things.
I'm going to base off of what Donnie said, that vehicle is better than condition than ours. We use it all right now.
And you're giving yours to me.
This vehicle that we're getting is better than the one we utilize.
And they don't, we, they, they, they.
You have to read one to auction?
Yeah, the sheriff told me that he has some of it, and we go look at all.
Those are, those might be better.
Well, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, I remember the concerns.
Yeah, she was really concerned, but you're right, it's different uses, but she was really concerned, so I was really shocked to see her vehicle coming off.
Yeah, we use it every day.
If it's going to purchasing, maybe the purchase.
Well, I mean, I think that's like the point, Sheriff, could it, could we, just for the sake of making sure everybody has the best vehicle they can have, can everyone go look at the three the sheriff has, and we pass this, until you guys figure out which one you would like?
What do you think, Matt, you want to, you looked at this to, uh, work in.
Uh, the, a lot of the sheriff's vehicles that I got in had worn out seats, and, uh, like the handles are, have nothing in them anymore, it's just rubber.
You already, it was.
Well, and, and even as it relates to worn out seats, I mean, I'm remembering something very specific about, um, Idella's car, and I remember electrical questions.
The window would move up or down or something.
Has to be leather, or the seats, or that's aesthetic stuff, you know, but I remember her having safety concerns about the vehicle, and I just.
Yeah, I'm basing it off of what Donnie said, I told him, he said it's a bad vehicle, because we fixed a lot of the issues that were wrong with it, but as far as I know, I asked him again, or, uh, before we left, I said, is that vehicle going to be good? And he said, yeah.
It's got a little bit, I guess, with the.
So in other words, you guys get the best of the worst?
Yeah.
Well, so do you want to go look at the three that the sheriff has, or?
I would, no, we can go look at it, I think you got me all right. We'll just go look at it.
It makes good seats.
We said windows off.
And handles.
I just think we should look at.
I think, well, just take the bottom out and just.
I just feel like we rotate the sheriffs much more quicker through the system, and I don't, I don't remember how long have we had Constable Jackson's for some time.
Okay, so you want to pass this until next time?
I just, to y'all, there you are.
Okay.
Are you just?
There's, there are two, and in this little map, there's two explorers out there too, the, the insides of them are not where, but they may be.
Okay, all right, well, let's just pass it to next time, I will, I'll talk to you in a few weeks. All right, number thirteen, formal bid number one-one-two-five dash one-six award to consider an act upon allowing the formal bid, one-one-two dash one-six road materials, M C dash thirty chromo oil through asphalt and fuels comply, as the lowest responsive bid, the amount of two dollars and three cents a gallon delivered, and two dollars and ten cents a gallon, a gallon undelivered. Secondary award to C four, the asphalt products, in the amount of four, four forty-seven a gallon delivered, and three forty-nine gallon undelivered, but it's budgeted.
This was based off of the, you remember we did the formal end bid we did, uh, this commodity is per, real, it's relatively new commodity, right, Sebastian?
Well, we used this chromo in the past when we built roads, we have to build the roads on the river, so it came up that we need to use this, because, uh, the stuff that we use now, we don't store it, we just order it, you know, or go get it as needed, but since we're doing Bishop Ranches, we need about six thousand gallons, we can't store the A T P, so we have to store this in two thirty, and we have a tank in the back that will store it.
And this was brought up, I think it was already closed and awarded, so we had to go out for another formal bid on this commodity.
And it was just something that slipped my mind in the budget time or bid time, uh, because of the quantity we're going to use, so that's why we're putting it now.
But it, but it is budgeted?
Yes, it's, it's, it's almost the same price they.
I make a motion that we approve the, uh, award, a formal bid number one-one-two-five dash one-six road materials as presented.
One second.
Sir.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Five is a one, thank you very much. Number fifteen, asset disposition, to consider an act upon allowing Purchasing to remove fifteen tasers from the sheriff's inventory, sheriff's department signed the tasers certificate of destruction from fifteen tasers, and they purchased fifteen new tasers with the JAG grant money. And I'm, the second, and I'm going to read all those numbers, that's okay, we got, I don't have it in your pocket, yeah. So, any questions on that, Vicky, you think, uh?
No, this is just a process that, to, that enables for Purchasing to dispose of the assets.
Okay. And these tasers are not usable for anybody else to use here?
I can't, I have one just.
What do you see?
You had the opportunity to volunteer.
I did, no, I can't. They go put out money, they'll sit down, yeah.
I offered a bit, I'm sorry.
You did.
I'm doing it.
I did, I did not, I did a motion, please.
I make a motion to, uh, allowing Purchasing to remove fifteen tasers from the sheriff's inventory.
Sir.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Five is a one, thank you very much. Jail report, we have four hundred and sixty-seven individuals in our jail, eighty of those are females, and the percentage of felonies is eighty point five percent, and the history match is fourteen point five. None in children's? None in children's. Deputy County, you turned out of those in the office, our department, we don't know about that yet.
Yeah, other than the one that happened, uh, yesterday, the fire that, none.
Okay. In the second session, anything for agenda items next time, besides the one we just passed.
Just a reminder that we'll be in Santa Fe building, and thinking to the committee that is helping.
And those of you that have not paid your money yet, do you have any leads?
Sheriff, I said.
Sheriff, yes or no?
I don't know, Roger, it was a speaker that was going, that would be.
Oh, I see, okay, okay, all right, that is all, we are adjourned, thank you very much.